There it is. Ready?
Yeah.
May I have a right? I want to be even to the plan, the United States. And should you probably say this one nation. In this, this is all. It's a little bit changes. While everyone, and I don't expect. Of the board supervisor, Julian. The institution day, the only thing that has to be done with. Very. Um, the board supervisor, Jimmy, from that is setting our suspect. That's that publication, and therefore the end. This can happen if it helps the building's route on the Monday. Please, as long as they're in for the 30th. And first question, I will promise that I never will not. Anyone have comments? From now, we move on to, um, government. First step is resolution 20314, preliminary five of. We were fifteen years, fifteen hundred thirty point four to the lower. And one five, is it over?
The board's side of the resolution.
For the, are there any questions from the board? Are there any questions from the public? Seeing none, and we're with the emotions of the resolution 20314, preliminary. Part of subdivision two, the fifteen hundred, the fifteen point four is even over. They were back there. So, all those in favor? Next up, the duration of the question, or my involvement with the. For the government movement. In the way in the moment. Good evening, Kristen, Kristen Fiance of our. Twelve, of your representative, uh, Wood University. First, the. In development, her request, I have seen. When may he is the director of campus project. Griffin, Bear, and Mary this year will be as well. We have some problems to. Can you, if we start here? So there are three residence halls, we call them the triflex. They are named Loyola, Sleep Bridget, and Sienna Halls. And as you can see, in the center corner of. This sign, circled in blue, that's the area. Triflex. Did you find that? This is crashing here, okay, so, um, let me explain something. I've been through a lot of stuff. Isn't that? So these, um. Residence halls are in the center. Of the, uh, campus. Next slide would be this. So, um, on this plan. Just gonna. So here are the triflexes, it's filling, this filling. Some town is. There is an existing parking area. Here. In the middle of the triflex. And in this parking area, there's a door that serves the entrance for this parking area. And students use this, go in and out to go to their classes. The idea is to take this parking area and move it to the other side. Of the buildings so that courtyard can be created in the center. They want to separate the vehicles from. So turn that, hold in the center. Yep, and still, uh, courtyard, everything. Students can congregate, uh, they can still live in and out that side. Or, but that parking will then be at adjacent to existing parking. See on the screen. Um, you'll notice that. The whole, that's the fountain, that's. That blue, and I just see that on the. Switches, as well, and ask her. So they want to repurpose this, ADA ramp, uh, make this. Another mention, this would be by people access that. Parking areas, we. Certainly, the day and market. Um, next slide. So this is some of the elements that we want to incorporate into the courtyard area. Uh, at some, see, the area, some of the space for students to congregate. They don't really have. How, how, they should space. This line. Um, this is just a view of that area as well. But then, we still see the areas, and some landscaping, parking, state and light. Next slide. And then here is, um, same area would be filled to change to provide cover for those who sit up. Spaces and, and have a protection for them some. So, uh, we filed in development. Application for a waiver, the total square footage. Impermeable covers that is. This, um, creation of new congregation spaces for that. Ninety three square feet. Um, that stormwater management is incorporated. Application that was filed, uh, two weeks ago for the innovation center, which is located adjacent. Uh, to this area, there is existing stormwater management property. Uh, there are numerous bases, I think, for in total that manager. For the university, or the IAS, you, you have to talk about. Has to do with stormwater management. Okay, perhaps, given the stormwater management facilities that need leaving off. Or bring to your, because this actually, for this, being part of the health and patient center. Uh, stormwater management, it's already been included and designed as those plans were pending. Um, I'm willing to work some out, or solicit that. That doesn't get built, for whatever reason, which would be absolutely horrible for the university. That we would install what's necessary, uh, for this additional purpose. Um, that's the sounds. Glad we're talking, man. Al Conley, your fire marshal is here, you're. Hands where we. I'll speak on, so, when he. Is okay with the. You trust all his comments. Uh, and I can get your comments. If you want to spend a few minutes talking about that. Do you, yeah, okay. Don't leave your comment. Your comments begin, or they want to. If you prefer comment, have, have to deal with that storm. Then, um. Uh, like I said. For that, we are adding, so the filter for volume. See, the same stormwater management that does exist today, those will. Try, the green, and things. And storm management, uh. Facility, so, we think that way. Do that today as part of this construction, but we like to defer. Stormwater management. This. If for some reason, that doesn't. Since, does start in July of this year, we can agree on a petition that would require us. To do whatever thing, stormwater management is necessary for this. We are confident that is looking forward and all this would be captured. Uh, because this property is located, these residence halls are made from RCTs. Property owners also. For existing systems, therefore not. Any of our neighbors. So that's the response to comment one. Uh, comment two has, yes, we know there was a potential conflict, there is no conflict, that's a move. Five, we cannot, we can handle that. Number three has to do with the storm. Number four, um, points out, we have some basin plants in here. Passing. We will comply with the requirement that seventy five percent of landscaping would be native. So that would be a vision that we comply with it. Uh, number five has to do with, uh, rates being vehicle rated, we comply with that. Number six, uh, was a comment about papers, papers, papers with. Democracy, Loyola, so we. Uh, number seven is about. Management. And has to do with. Approvals, of course, could apply. Uh, I think, okay. Uh, maybe I'll let her, uh, just. Uh, first, how we will do the construction basin, obviously. That includes and, of course, today campus, so we comply with that. We will do the construction basin, so no conflict or TV issues. Number two has to do with some of the label of the plans, we'll apply. Number three had to do with additions of sidewalk from the new parking area. Uh, up to the congregation area, and we can do that, it's all file. Uh, four has to do. Request for crosswalk that was missing in the same area, again, we'll apply. Number five was about ADA ramps, uh, we swill to reject the. Again, without, there's, um, crossings are at, right, either right, it's already flat. So we said, it's fine with that, so that comment will go away. Number six was a request regarding the ability for vehicles to drive up to that, up that serving area. Um, we do want to have emergency vehicles there if they need to. Now, so we're gonna add two bollards to protect that area, so students can still get through the bollards with their bins. When they went, they got this big bins that will fit through the bollards, but that way it protects vehicles from driving up into that. Excepting, which is the apples. Seven is just a comment that. Beautifying campus. Traffic impacting, and then they ask for a response letter. Reconsidering our tasks, we can. That's it.
Yeah, that's, so, um, did you address the point of like, the, um, the surface? It's the, um. Just sustain the weight of cars going.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah.
Just to bring out.
A second. You know, so. Uh, when you're talking about the papers ever.
Yes.
Yeah, the papers actually, we can save some concrete. Uh, on all services, so. And, you know, it's probably.
Well, I think. Think, to the farm a little more, um, extension of the denim access. I didn't even get on hold, just wanna make sure I got that. What we include in, and I didn't. Um, you.
Do you sign the cards?
Yeah. The denim comment.
The, the bars has Sienna Hall, so the pavement between these buildings. Is that, is that what we're talking about?
Uh, so in the farm, one of those recommendations was to require an extension of the denim. So it's like on the one side of the building, and off, and be included in the review of anything you can put in the house. To last, that would affect the page. The name is, yes.
Uh, hi, Steve, from Wood University, I come over to the board. The, uh, the lane that was referred to is the one that comes all the way up this line. That's the access lane past Sienna, that is going to, uh, become part of, or wing that. Um, moves up towards the, the amount of curations. And we'll keep you that lane certain width and a certain amount of, uh, type of material or for mercy vehicles to be accessed. They want access. That roadway, Dennis, to the back of the universe, there's something that, uh, farm marsh. Uh, and, uh, far cheaper than us, so to do that, or.
I just wanna make sure, I didn't, no folks that. Are there any questions from the board? But there, we have a recent piece trying to come. No, that's if we're able to receive at the end of July for. President. Out. Thank you. What we have in mind, considering some of our requests for, we have still, and well, whatever. Uh, memo from our. I think it was a little bit of our medical report, about the. Professional staff. Um, regulation. Included, due to the minor danger of close for recommendation actually. This would drive this, which are, and the regulation, of great, that requesting for. The foundation of approval of five hundred million in, in, by our marshal. Um. Again, are there any questions from the board? Seeing that, like, the promotion was a version. Uh, the request for the waiver landed on, by the first, when we were doing their.
That's the, just the group of, of questions, or the, or.
Uh, did I pay it all, sorry? Or pay it, yeah, regulation. Okay, the recommendation for them.
The giraffe is.
Yeah. Did I not play it for? You've proved missed.
Well, it's written that way on that. It's written on that, it is written that.
Prepare the, the, the. Regarding the. Development. Oh, this is great.
Hi.
Thank you. Yeah. Next up is the resolution twenty three fifteen, or two, or one, is it? I think it's five, 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 definitely. And, yeah, how we're spiritual, we're. What are the questions from the board?
My, my question is to you, we have, we have the current as the.
Yeah.
That's what's getting filed. Correct, okay.
Can we get a half hour of time more? We're coming from, uh. A lot, I don't know.
Yeah.
So we have before the iteration. Um, of this resolution, but it's in the same as your motion. Also, is there a second?
Starting.
All those in favor? Next one, uh, amendment to our development, we should please with that. Um. Want to try it over, watch.
Uh, can we go in the record?
Yes.
All right, this is the order, is there. An increase in the transportation impact fee as well as the reboot. Transportation impact fee from. Seattle, complacent, and East Stanford chapter. Um. But the one following exhibits, for the record, exhibit number one, proposed ordinance. Exhibit number two, the public notice, exhibit number three, uh, crucial publication. Exhibit number four, Montgomery County Council, which is, uh, recommendation, the second twenty twenty three, in which they recommend. Uh, approval. Uh, and exhibit number five, in our memorandum from the Kansas State, stated, uh, June twenty second, twenty twenty three. I'm stating for the record that, uh, Brian Jones from the Kansas State is. Present. In the event, or any questions, as they have been, uh, was calculated, will arrive that. Uh, the duty will be three thousand eight hundred sixty five hours per new afternoon hour trip. And, uh, Brian, explain what that is, very important, watch.
My, good, on my, for some, please, and Brian, how, how that.
Do you have the back of yours, will it be?
Yeah.
Then we will, at the, the avenue, we, we will waste our true generation of sign. In our transportation engineer, okay. True generation of, there. Uh, we have the, the, on our trip space, on square footage, in commercial office, residents, we get. And we give number of nutrients, nutrients are, the, you take the tow trips. Uh, yes, I was just covering all the way, already in the road. Truck, piss, my trips, and years ago, new trips from sign. All five new trips, and see, we, we, so, they should have read. That, well. The, the, what I should, what I should do.
All right, but, that's what we're. Don't I have to make my own line?
No.
So we have, we have. The lower one, or tally, I mean, so. Those specifically for the writing. Um, the traffic impact needs on chapter twelve, very subdivision, land development. The new title eight, title, for then, that's, obviously, the amount of the traffic, during the occasion, that they, is their motion.
So.
That, and all those in favor?
Fine. Close the record. It's hard to.
Next up is, um, the iteration of the point of your. Or the feels, kind of, now, the, giving a high trip report, uh, around that appointment, how mine. Uh, we did receive a lot of gravitation, and it was. It was for speaking. Um, that, we told, included, and we're, as well, we were, from our staff. Like, Roski, to the UCC, or the field, the, for, inspired, the, for, to them, and home, sir. Any questions from the board? Any questions, and following, um.
Yeah.
The member that's involved in to approve the appointment, uh, by the, to, uh, the UCC board, there is that. So, all those in favor?
Uh.
Very. And we kind of like to, uh, thank, mine, for all of you. And, and this, uh, when we were talking. After letting work, and we, and others, for, um. Don't we have a person? Thanks. Um, next, we have reviewed the chapters. And doing before. Um, are there any questions for?
One, two, more. Go to mine.
Pretty good, before me. Next up is, you have the traffic engineer before, there is any questions for the traffic engineer?
I don't see.
Please not be, we'll just connect. I don't know, we can answer, I don't think that. But, I, I would be fine.
I think we've been pretty well. Kept up to date on what the, yeah, yeah, traffic agent, and this one.
Next, we, now, this chapter is from your fire, what, uh, we have. Four. Um. It outlines. The recommended action, which is to authorize advertising. Um. Are there any questions from the, yeah, local? Actually, that's good. Um, are there any questions? Anyone? On, uh, or in person? So the ordinance split out of the volunteer cash credit program, uh, with a matter of fact, for volunteer member of the volunteer fire company to establish management procedures and, you know. Resolution included in the packet, we advertise this in April. The ordinance will authorize early some tax credits until a thousand dollars per year. For any active volunteer, either one of them, on this, we would leave a fire company at one, or ten, or a year far. Um, it also. Who could have helped process this work, if it was really good for. Then. The ordinance is completed, and not been free of fire as, as I was making motion to, uh. The ordinance creating, and, and, all of your part, fireworks, for, and. All those in favor? Um. Next, I'm going in by, we're. We have, also, establish the eligibility, and.
Because that. In the mass.
So this is, this is to. Establish the eligibility, the bargaining, the long picture. Program, it kind of walks through, um. The acts, and all the, what all the writers want to do, the seller, from the board. But I think, you have each hall on, like, yeah, but each hall, it, it pays. About all, all, really, right. Learning as we write one on one. Seeing now, I'd like to make a motion to approve our resolution twenty twenty sixteen, so. Is that, all in the favor?
Hi.
And. Next up, we have the suitable. Mark, most. Uh, making their leaning on our red, right, them, this orbit, create a historical program, the circle. And, as we may, often, by. And as a reasonable, how, and some are, um, for being there, and the, and the, and the, and. Um. In addition to the eligibility requirements. That, the patient, the process, without lines, so, it's taking. And we, we're higher, and standard, and, and, and.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment, just to confirm what we discussed previously, that. The historical market program in no way would affect any rights of property owners to do what they wish with their property. The historical market program itself, just a means of putting out. Um, places of historical significance in the future. I just want to make that clear.
Thank you. And, um, I'm very honored, and, for them. So first step is the consideration of the, of the ordinance, that is, that is. So, um, we're currently making a motion, to, to. Uh, the ordinance is actually, on the, on, on, for, seven. All those in favor?
Hi.
Fine.
Next up is the approval, go over the, of the, of the, of the, of the. And a lot of them, within our board having, walk through the. Before I, the minister, mission, on the, 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 the. Maybe, in here. Any questions, and any? Online, or is this them? So, like, maybe, for, for, like, have, certainly, never mind, and. All those in favor?
I'm.
Any questions? Next up, um. Is the consideration, um, the authority, the advertising, the, 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 the. Uh, certainly, we, so. Who they are. Are, I did, um, from staff, and then I have. Then, kind of. Encourage, just all, consider the adoption of, from, 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 from. Um, the one that's established. Um, that really, and. Our, the, or. Or, I should, for my, um, my, my, my. Seeing now, I like to, uh, maybe, go into, uh, I'm, 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 I'm. And all those in favor?
Hi.
Next. The, the, of our, of our, of our, of this. Property. Um, including our board packet, was visualization, uh, what was, like, look like. Um, the changes versus what they look like currently. Um, and, um, 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 that. Um, we currently lease. In most harbor, um. Property, for the bank authority, um. They're making one request, to include the change in the land inside the property, or place the, for, 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 for. And, um, they're requesting our feedback. And our reaction as to this, and then that. Are there any questions, comments, in back of the board, or, like, this year?
Who, the, who, the, who? And, and, when? When? So, basically, is, basically, share right?
Yeah, this is more a landlord tenant matter, uh, landlords' approval of any sign, any changes, if, if, or, and, agreement. So, we assumption that they don't need any, any, approval, will not be. Not this week, not, maybe, for, for. So anything concerned from a traffic engineer, that, 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 we're placed, we're supposed to be placed with the initiative? We, we have, I think, why they, the confirms on this, on, or. I can, then, answer, since, I really get it all, sure. Um.
So if the board is okay with this, they, they still need to get, permits for this, not, like, this is just a permanent process. Of, of, needing, you just be handled by. You know, let's, but, but we need to, demonstrate, or, at least, that's the only. That, board, if you're okay with that. If you are, um, they don't have.
If there's no problem with excitement for traffic issues, I, I personally, the problem that would always change.
Initially, I think, I, we, 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 very high. Um, but then, I would. Um, but then I'm thinking initially and going out and trying to be helpful on the tree cover and. There's not any current news for. It didn't fit. The style of tooling and the grammar around it. Um. But the height of what they're building and it seemed to be too. Struck it to me. Or absolutely, very. Because it just might. Here it is. First thing. I didn't mean to.
So. Also, when I thought of that, you would have been at that point. Be turned that it's been squinven. For relations. Yeah. I don't. And you cannot, because even on board size. How would the board about? But it's only on the body to make themselves. So. And and just to clarify, there won't be more than that. All the others might truly replacing all the life relaxing, relaxing. This is the business replacing. Our thoughts on property, it's just. It's like it's true. And then yeah, it is. Seems like. It is the. Very common. Please come board with the change.
And Paul, we don't have to say that.
I mean. It first.
It's a. Are they?
Uh, I will leave it, if you wish, if they include three hours in the class. So that um. I didn't see this third number. Um, we all know where it is, but they will be a people on. Uh, placing first service. Make sure they didn't do that.
Just the.
Oh, sorry. We don't have our control, your lower.
Suggestion.
Any additional comments in calling or anyone? But when we hear the five weeks ago. Um. When I do bring in a board, we can have two members. We're not here, I think we have. And then that decision. And. Next up is um. That's the interest, which we want to put in a agreement and relate to trust for the traffic law in our summer. And then. Um, we have a report from our engineering. They reviewed the bill and regarded the student project. Those were two hundred nineteen. Four hundred percent. Probably review their recommendation. Peter, but a sensible to them was uh. Co- operational network and not especially again. Of the amount of one hundred seventy thousand one hundred thirty plus. Um. Is there any? Management for? I don't know, Mr. General. They will let enter in questions? Yeah, I don't have. Everybody has a question for the board.
Yeah.
Anyone have questions from the public? Then we can motion to award the raised religion equipment improvements. Related to the traffic six on our server, this is exactly the value of it. You know, one hundred seventy thousand. There's not a better motion. Um.
Something.
Although in favor? Uh, voting very. Next, the resolution twenty three thirteen regarding. Um, we have a memo from our. Uh, the standard reviewed the changes, I reviewed the fees are quite a doubt. And a number of the fees are being simplified. Um. And they are included in this resolution. Um, I don't know if you want to enable the sound to reasoning or how that the changes. Maybe.
Um, just internally at the building zoning department, we uh, reviewed all of the fees uh, related to permits and uh. Fire, uh, public safety and land development subdivision. Uh, and. Um, highway, like um, highway occupancy permits. We took a look at everything, everybody gave their feedback. We usually, every year we adopt a fee schedule. This year we uh, held off just so that we had the opportunity because we had been kind of tracking things over the past year, things that. We actually charged for that weren't included or they needed to be updated to reflect um, the cost associated with. With performing certain inspections and reviewing certain plans, that type of thing. So through staff recommendation, we came up with what's before the board to make the changes that were um. Included in this memo. Hmm.
Yeah, just I have one question. The uh, fee for all the ones. In this. That it's probably. And this is.
That's a little bit of re-intervention, that's all.
How?
I'm living this. Um, we repeat this. And I think we feel that um, they're farming. Right now, I mean, the problem we have is between residential and personal. That the residential, we don't think too high. But maybe at the point where somebody. Hasn't fixed around just paid it. And I think changes are what I'm going to do. Okay.
And um. Because the personal may need false. So great. How much shop? These in. Like.
Well, remembering that um. We know fine if the fire alarm did what it was supposed to do. What does that mean? That means that if the shower fills the firewall, that's what I. A false alarm, that's already correct. Where they're cooking. And they said all the false alarm. The ones that were entered, the ones that are unexplained. And are actually false activation. Those are the ones that are currently. Okay? Doesn't look for somewhat less than the overall package of the number of fire alarms.
And you mentioned the book and one. Seeing that having course of resolution for the question lower one and two. That's the general schedule for seven. After two thousand eight is the photo online document amended. I think all was a favor.
Aye.
Next up is review of random uh, your debate. He's a man. Reading. For able to find. I wanted to. I wanted to show the owner to uh, fire standard. And that is the. Did you have any questions, comments, if you want to share, ask if you want? Um, let me know, I want to. Just speak out.
Right, yeah, um, I. Um, maybe. I changed down what I did. So instead of. All about. Single. Account. Have and we. To think that's more for the CPA, make sure that everything is accounted for correctly. I'm kind of giving you more of a look exactly where we stand. How changed from last month to this one. Um, and if you have any questions or if you want to. Need to add anything, change anything, try to be a little more succinct, sort of see it and understand exactly. About the question, but can you give any answers to that?
You might, you might be back. Back and I. Only increase and decrease. And while it's more to understand it, and I appreciate that you gave it back. Just that I think where things are. Um. I don't know, I don't need to.
Oh, this, this could be the. Is there anything you want me to add?
It's more money. Magic lawn back there.
It's really nice. Figures. Or repeat us. For. That's understandable. Yes.
That very simple, I will say that I agree with that, so it's really. Come down for that like me, so I really appreciate, I I appreciate that it's. Clear and concise. Thank you for those efforts.
Um, for the, the uh, do you know that for the July meeting? Showing more of the same device. Tracking more. Points, so hopefully it'll be additional on there.
Will that be monthly or you're just going to do it sort of halfway through?
I would say to that. Which you have to do, but keep mine if you want that. Do that. It's a little bit more borrowed to go. To, um, but I can do that.
I think it would be helpful where we are in the budget. Just so we don't get surprised. If we're, if we're off, but I suspect you would let us know if we're sort of trending in a bad direction.
That's what I'm.
Um, but I think that's always helpful to compare to what we protect.
Yes, so. That's your reporting, what I did give you this time, don't you have any? That is, you can prepare to actual, but I'm gonna. So that you can see more detail. And I'm always gonna let you know.
Perfect.
Perfect. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next up, we have a approval for our main movies. Um, very special for the. I don't believe we can probably. Are we including the traffic? The movement of the. I have a very interesting. In that. Um. Let me think of a little bit of the. The invoice is there, that. So. All those in favor?
Aye.
There. And then comes the approval, we mentioned making very few that went on the grid of their home and then it's worked with it. Very much so, that is changing. Hmm. I had a little improvement in this, or like my work that went like the usual is like. So. All those in favor? Aye. Um, included in your packet, um, was updated with all their division meeting matters. Are there any, if some question? Uh, to to the last meeting on the list that, and we had a meeting from our D A C. Um, this is north advisory committee as well as. Very individual question. See. Thank her of all of your conclusions, of course, in that. The meeting had a theme. Um. Dan, I'll be.
Um, yeah, so just to bring up the thing right now, would be what's going on with this project. Um. They're clearing to read the vegetation right now. The contractor and the in kind of the E G O to try to give them enough and clear restoration to not aligns. As well as um, relocate the utility pools. I mean, relocated. Um, erosion and sanitation control are expected to be installed. Uh, train structure is happening for Thursday, fourth of next week, lead time limits that are expected in uh, mid July. Uh, which is one week set the road work to begin with.
Did our people at my schedule was like, I think. I see thing. Or where we are on. All this depends on.
Yeah, we're on schedule, it's last, I understand that. The boss can go work against the digital item. Like some problems, visual problems. And how long is the runway when it's back? I believe they're expecting the winner of twenty three or end of twenty three, twenty three division road work. The final payment being in two thousand twenty four. It depends upon. The winner is our winner out. Spring. So it's extremely fair to say that. All the whole, the whole of the roadway, perhaps not particularly. Accessible. By the end of twenty twenty two and twenty three, yeah. Which I, not surprisingly, that's a question I guess. How bad is it really being, when will it be back? Okay.
Um, I just had a question about. For this, and so a lot of uh, reasons. Something found. Uh, cement, we know.
Yeah.
Uh. So, uh, is the property uh, responsible? Or maintaining that shoulder, is of course, we go responsible? And the risk I'm asking is some, um. It seems pretty rough. By the. Just wondering, that's the way. So that that was cleared for road life. So the extraction is going to take place there. That's where it's probably. And spring before. Does a lot before the very beginning escaping planet, but it's. This is the very beginning of. It's got a little worse. Before it was done, but eventually it will. And then what can we see um? Um, equipment and machines. Uh, the old text. Joe.
Um. This is. There is a piece of which the proper camera started before bringing that leak. We just talked about it in the past, and it's been a perfect time. Uh, we're calling it, who's on what? Who's the blue on this? We're against the capital residents that may. A son of a daughter, husband, wife, driver, have some specialties. And. They may have a site. Are the purpose, are the talk, are that. You can send them how this um. Here are. And what we can hand is to the all to the progress. It's as clear as the day. Driver's special needs. It's in several areas around the country. I think we're the first time that's leading start. Um. It's just a precautionary. Exchange of information to allow. People that we pull them. And you also. A common language to see that we're not being awkward. And there was season to be a breath. So it's a great burden, we just got it today. We'll be on TOSK and soon. We'll put out our reviews weekly. We'll put them on Facebook, we'll blast them, we'll have it. They all are very different. One of the hosts. So that's just right to that. I think it's an awesome idea, and I hate to be a lawyer. But. Is there any concern? I I get the drivers' verbal. Yes, I get the drivers' verbal number question. But I would get it, but then. Is there any concern that like filling this out? It's like a condition, like they have, they don't, they have autism. There's dementia. I I, again, I think this is wonderful, a great idea, I just. Know how to teach these people. I guess they don't have to fill the sound, if they do, they just talk to somebody else, people, so if you don't.
Understand that. There's all. Those devils getting into the, the, the communications town, it's. There's a family that, or somebody that like, that thing.
Yeah, this, this makes the most sense because it avoids. Any uncertainty from law enforcement that. They're trying to be disruptive or. Defiance, or when it's not the case, I mean, the. Surprise payments are as great, I mean, they're. And somewhat similar. While they still do, you should put in. There's a thing with the. My honest. That. Some of that. And I don't think it'll violate any of these, the individual is keeping themselves, you know, providing information. Yeah, it's all a voluntary part of it, I I agree, I just. Yeah, I mean, that's what, I think it's great, and I'm glad you're doing it. Well.
This confirmed behind the walls, so sort of these. This is probably the mind of all, so, um, so he's, okay, we're lost.
Government would never really violate the law.
And, uh, for that, that's all about, um, you can get that copy there and share it, and I'm sure we're going.
Since you're, uh, in contact. But this department, yeah, but you want to say.
We'll have. We'll have.
We'll be coming back for a video. Yeah, you know, why?
I'm sorry.
Our community services. Will be, as in, will be, uh, the Brian Club on Thursday, uh, one day a year. Law, which already counts as the Brian Club, and our, it's very cool day, that's what makes Thursday, it was up yesterday, canceled. Uh, so we're sending, uh, also handy, and I'm scouting, we'll be on Thursday.
So, right, yes. As a visitor, we're naming the adults, kids, apparently, everything, they have special needs.
Yeah. And as you saw, I think we spoke about it when we did on our first product, that first hour being. Black zone. The response for little things is huge, you know, the people who's good to, to not, again, everyone, so. All our. There's.
All right, any people who are ready to respond to this? Add this to the phone with the class. Uh.
We did, uh, coming down, uh, panel part, um, I'll pop in here, I'm not sure where we spend next.
Some of them with the phone, and the website.
It's on Facebook. We'll be sure it's on website.
Yeah, the last thing he gave me was a bit cone of ice.
Yeah. Appreciate you. Thank you.
And someone say that, how do you? Good one. Um, so the last one, so. Um, just one, uh, I'd like to, um, thank the staff and the work. To end the ordinance. Right, it's. Um, that's been in the works. So I appreciate it being accomplished, uh, and just to really get a rate that our, our lives. On here, so this is just a small way to, to then. Sent by some folks to our. Right?
Um, I'll just enjoy the fourth of July weekend, four week holiday.
Okay. Um. I wanted to remind everybody, July eleventh, we're going to. And we're going to have one. That's going to be our last hours itself. Um, company presentation, we done it for part of the bar, so if anyone's interested, everybody, a lot of comments, they have each one. Um, kind of cross, we're, the last, so. Uh, where they live, just for my neighborhood, if they're interested, come out. And, uh, and if you're not. It will be recorded, um, at a. Dream on, on, to, and then I will, it will be, um, in person. Um, one wish for everybody, uh. Enjoy the July, um, I want to thank everybody that was a participant and. So, wishing, but just turning on a thing. Yeah, but we're all prepared, uh, for the department, I'm a little bit, I'm a manager, we're always being willing to work with the talent, um. And that, well, no, I want to share my. All messages. I want to put. Um, to thank you. That's, they're coming, it's also. All the person that were in front. You know, last year. And. And that, yes, they have, wants somebody to go with opportunities. In the past, I mean, I'm getting a theory, you know, one of this. Um, so you can put it in the down, in, 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 with your friends, with that, like, when you're going to work in the next. So, all those in favor, on your.